Hey, this is Cookie Cameraman live from the Guard Theatre in New London, where we're about to see the inauguration of the new mayor for New London, Daryl Sinizio. Hang out, check out, and we got a big crowd here tonight. Cookie Cameraman, Jelly Street Chronicle.
This is the Jelly Doc, and you're watching Jelly Street Chronicle.
Tonight, we inaugurate more than individuals. We inaugurate a new form of government here in the city of New London. And we honor this historical first by having it one time in one place, here at the Historic Guard Arts Centre, the swearing-in of the Board of Education, the New London City Council, and for the first time in over ninety years, a publicly-elected mayor of the city.
I apologize, I jumped ship, but now, the presentation of the fellows.
I always swear to discharge your duties as this London Board of Education member to the best of your ability.
I swear I will try.
That's all we can ask.
Raise your hand. Jason Cattell, having been chosen as a board member of the Board of Education for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
All right, guys. Sorry, Jack. Margaret Mary Currie will be sworn in by Captain Foley. Thank you.
Meghan, it's truly an honor to stand with you this evening as you once again pledge your service to your beloved city of New London. It is also very fitting that this time, your service is focused on children, but throughout your life, you have uplifted the younger generations as a friend, a mentor, a compassionate advocate. And so I ask you, Margaret Mary Currie, that having been chosen as a member of the New London Board of Education, for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
I do.
Since your father, having been chosen as a member of the Board of Education for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
Ladies and gentlemen, raise your right hand. Ladies and gentlemen, Garcia Cattell, having been chosen as a board member of this New London Board of Education for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Raise your right hand. Elena Muse, having been chosen as a member of the Board of Education for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
At this time, I'd like for us all to recognize the members of the board-elect, members of the Board of Education. Jason, are there some people you would like to give a shout-out to?
There's a few people I'd like to recognize today. My mother, Janet Kudala is here. My beautiful daughter, Elizabeth here. My brother, John, he worked hard on my campaign. Couldn't make it, but I want to recognize him. My Aunt Mary Alice is here. My cousin Robbie Allen is here this evening. My cousin Kristen, I don't believe she's here, but she worked very hard on the campaign. Mike Doyle, a friend, a family, a brother, a lady, a kid. And Rob Arrow is also here this evening. A member of my family here. And also, last thing, my niece, Ashley, who cannot go to bed any time, is also here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know any families.
My granddad, Matthew, Kevin Scott, who's here someplace.
My niece, Kathy Foley, who's going in. My niece, Katie Sebel, who's here in the back. My cousin, Tony Sylvester, who's around someplace. I get the rest of the lonely ladies, so.
I'd like to recognize my husband, Jose Gonzalez. My sister, Angela, my three children, Joseph, and I guess Jonathan, and the rest of my friends and family.
I would like to recognize my husband, John. My boys, Gregory, John. My grandkids, Levante, Tenencia, Shavanda. My pastor, Pastor Larry Delong, Miracle Temple Church. Our mother of the church, Mother Delong, and my Miracle Temple family.
Two years, but the rewards of the system.
I would like to recognize my husband, Terry Potter. My son, Terry Potter Jr. My daughter, and her actress, Catherine De Potter. My parents, William and Phyllis Wiggins. The same family, friends, community, and my church as well. God bless you.
He's been a member for the past several years on the Board of Ed. He is a caring person, cares for children of New London. And I would be honored to have the board's support to nominate Bill Morris as president of the Board.
Mrs. Gonzalez, for a second. You say it. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I will say the nominations are closed. I will ask for the vote by Mr. Moore, so I'm afraid to say aye. Aye, all opposed. Mr. Moore, you are now president of the Board.
I would like to nominate his Garcia Gonzalez as vice president of the New London Board of Education.
Is there a second? Mrs. Muse?
Yes.
Second. Mrs. Garcia Gonzalez has been duly nominated and second. Are there further nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing that, I will move the nominations to close and declare that Mr. Garcia Gonzalez is now the vice president of the New London Board of Ed.
That the Board of Ed appoint Jason Cattell as secretary of the New London Board of Education for 2011 to 2012.
Second, Mrs. Haga.
Are there any other?
Yes, may I introduce the overall to Council Heissler. I'd like to fall forward, his beautiful bride, Mrs. Jessie Heissler. To introduce the oath.
Would you please raise your right hand? Reverend Wade A. Heissler Jr., as chairman of the City Council for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
I do.
At this time, we'll ask that Councilor Donald Maprino come to the mic, Secretary of State Denise Merrill, and White.
Donald Maprino, having been chosen as councilor for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Who will be ministered the oath of office by Miss Evelyn Losiotes.
Would you raise your hand, please? Do you, John J. Nathan, having been chosen City Council for the city of New London, do you swear affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Marie Freeze McFarren, and she would be administered the oath by Miss Michelle Allen.
I am Marie Freeze McFarren. Having been chosen City Council for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of this office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
Anthony L. Nolan, who has been administered the oath by Secretary of State Denise Allen. The Bible will be held by him.
Raise your right hand. Anthony L. Nolan, having been chosen City Council for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
I do.
Michael E. Passrow, and the oath will be administered by Miss Mary Menden.
Michael. Michael Passrow, having been chosen City Council for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
I will.
Adams Pachachi, having been chosen City Council for the city of New London, do you swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office according to your best skill and judgment so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. In the first quarter of business for the council's election of the council president, Councilor Freeze McFarren.
Good evening. Tonight, we make history in New London. The role and power of the city council has changed. The New London City Council, as the legislative body of our local government, acts as the point and check and balance for the governing of our city. We have a great responsibility to New London and to the people that elected us to serve them. The city council president will lead the council and must be someone with demonstrated leadership skills, a proven commitment to the entire community, and a record of public service. Over the years, I have witnessed first the commitment to New London by Michael Passrow. Michael is a lifelong resident of New London. He was a lifeguard at Ocean Beach. He is a New London firefighter, a labor attorney, and a veteran city council. You do not have to look far to see how deeply involved in the city of New London Michael Passrow is. For this, and far too many reasons for this, it is an honor for me to place into nomination for the president of the city council of New London by the name of Mr. Michael Passrow.
If you were to follow the second, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? It's been moving for approximately a second that the nominations be closed. We call for the vote on Michael Passrow for president of the city council. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Close the polls. The ayes.
You will be polled by the age of seventeen thirty-four. A lot of history here. You, Michael Passrow, being elected president of the city council for the city of New London, do swear by the name of the everlasting God that you will faithfully and uprightly discharge the duties of that office so long as you shall hold the same so help you God?
I'd like to call the last ceremonial mayor of the city of New London up to the podium for the presentation, Martin Teal. I've had the privilege of being friends with Marty for over forty years. We act like satellites that are coming together. And it's been a long story, a little less. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. It's been indeed an honor, courage to serve the city of New London as our summer mayor. Thank you very much. Now under the new charter, we've replaced his deputy mayor with a council president pro temp. And I'll entertain no choose now for a council president pro temp. Councilor Mead.
Thank you, Mr. President. It gives me great pleasure, a man I've known my whole life, to nominate for pro temp president, Reverend Mr. Wade A. Heissler.
Do I have a second for that nomination? Seconded by Councilor Maprino. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I move the nominations to close.
Nominations have been a move, a motion to close nominations. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Nolan. Nominations have been closed. I'll call for a vote on the nomination of Wade A. Heissler Jr. as president pro temp of the council. All in favor? Any votes?
I can tell Wade A. Heissler is president pro temp. The general Heissler will be considered president pro temp to the president pro temp.
Stand up. Oh, I'm sorry.
By the way, we serve together. The general said it was many years ago. It's my honor to be here today. So, you, Wade A. Heissler Jr., being duly elected council president pro temp for the city council for the city of New London, do swear by the name of the everlasting God that you will faithfully and uprightly discharge the duties of that office so long as you shall hold the same so help you God?
I will.
Mrs. Jessie Heissler, would you please come forward to the podium and present the council president pro temp as gal.
God bless you, Reverend Heissler. And here you are, two ladies, you guys, and direct the council. Bring it to order. Keep it. God bless you.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. It is the day that the time we gather in this historic theatre for the installation of this building. This building, in the mission of forming our center that supports it, has succeeded by forging crucial alliances within our community. The splendor of this ninety-year-old effort has been preserved through a successful collaboration between business, the arts, education, and philanthropy. That strategic alliance has made the institution relevant today and has provided the resources to preserve this piece of our city's history. The success of our new government will also depend upon preserving our rich traditions while making our institutions responsive to the challenges of today. Our success depends on the quality of the alliances we build with our partners in the community. Our city will never succeed by following the dictates of one person or one faction. Our success is common when we found consensus within our diverse community. Conversely, our failures have come when we pushed forward with initiatives that were opposed by significant segments of our community. As we concede this new government, we must pledge to embrace our diversity and strive always to build consensus. The English settlement from which this city grows was founded more than three hundred and fifty years ago. Since its founding, this community has gone through many different elements, through good economies and bad, through war that brought destruction to these various streets, and through furious natural storms that wrecked havoc on our neighbors. This city has persevered through the bad times and has, I'm sorry, this city has persevered through the bad times and has been successful in the good. I am confident that this new government we herald in today brings a new era of prosperity to our glorious city. Viva New London! Before the ceremony ceremony of the day, I'd like to also introduce some digger jerrys that are in the audience. I know from Rocky, I've got the Mark Den of Subbase. Thank you for coming. Members of the New London Firefighters, Pipers, and Drums. Last time I'm gonna say this. The mayor-elect for the city of New London, Daryl Justin Sinizio.
Hatteras, stand at the hall. Wait, march! Mayor Daryl Fenicio, the sworn-in mayor of the City of New London. Gentlemen.
Attorney Fenicio, are you prepared to take the oath of office?
Yes, Mr. Clerk, I am.
You treasure my hand and repeat after me. I, Daryl Justin Fenicio, do solemnly swear
I, Daryl Justin Fenicio, do solemnly swear
that I will protect and preserve the charter of the City of New London.
That I will protect and preserve the charter of the City of New London.
And will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities.
And will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of mayor of the City of New London.
Of the office of mayor of the City of New London.
According to my best skill and judgment.
According to my best skill and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the honor to represent you, the mayor of the City of New London, Daryl Justin Fenicio.
Thank you, Clerk Karen, President Pasrow, members of the City Council and Board of Education, Chairman Sadi, Secretary Merrill, distinguished visitors, and my fellow New Londoners. Change has come to New London. To understand how significant a political and social shift has just occurred in our city, consider this. The historic building in which we meet has been a center of cultural and artistic life in our city since it was built in nineteen twenty-six. In its storied past, national and state leaders have been here, along with so many famous artists, musicians, and performers. Yet tonight, for the first time in our history, a directly elected mayor of New London speaks from this stage. For so, so long in our city's history, a voice has been missing from our civic discourse. A role essential to our growth remained unperformed and indeed unperformable under our old system of government. We, the people of this city, knew that something was missing. We knew what we needed. We knew what had to change. And so, we voted. And we voted for strong, principled, honest, positive, and in this diversity, yes, progressive, new leadership. Almost a year ago, I offered to serve our city as that leader. And through the democratic process, you placed your trust in me at the polls. I stand before you now tonight to say as plainly as I can that all my efforts, all my skills, all my best judgments are now completely in your service. As I said when I declared for this office, and as I say again to you now, I will seek no other public office or employment so long as I hold the office of mayor. New London needs a leader who will set a steady course and see a vision for our city's future through to completion. We need a committed, dedicated leadership. I commit to you that all that I am, indeed now my very life, belongs to New London. I will endeavor always and ever, each day, to not let you down. However, no New Londoner can do this alone. Our entire government, those in elected and appointed offices, down to every employee in every department, must give our all to the great and weighty tasks that lay before us. So too must every single New Londoner give their all to aid in our city's reverb. All of us. But to those who have waited, waited for so long for the moment to come when New London might finally turn that corner. The moment when the great power of the people in this city might be at last unleashed. I say to all of you that this is that moment. This is our chance. This is our time tonight.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.